Everybody, are we already in the back? Commissioner Jung, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Yeah, alright. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us this morning. It is October 19th, halfway through the month of October. It feels like that's flown by. Call of the order, the regular meeting of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. And we are, at this time, I would ask that Sergeant McCaskill, will you lead us in the Pledge of Legion, sir?
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Nice to see you this morning. Alright, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Here, be a phone.
Thank you. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager, Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney, Mary Canderas.
And I'm Jan Galasey, your County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. Alright, and with that, Mr. Manager, we're on to item three.
Tess? Yeah, there you go. Appearance, item three is appearance by Shirley Falcons Roberts, Executive Director, Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, to receive a $10,000 donation from Washoe County in honor of Jeff McCaskill's an NCCFF service to the community. And in chambers today, we have Jeff McCaskill, we have, I'm sorry, we have Shirley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much. And Mr. Brown, thank you for the introduction. I'm Shirley Falcons Roberts. I'm the Executive Director with Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. And here today, I have Sergeant McCaskill, who is the reason that we are here. I wanted to just tell you a little bit about what Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation does and what Jeff McCaskill does. So we are 100% local organization, locally funded, and help all Northern Nevada children in the fight of their life when they receive a cancer diagnosis. That assistance comes in the form of financial and emotional assistance. That takes us raising money and events, and we are very grassroots oriented, very grassroots funded. Jeff helps us in every way, and we're so excited that he is being honored. He has helped us with our events, 13-hour days. He brings the truck. He is our go-to. And really, we'll do anything and everything that we need as an organization. So we are grateful. And what's important to me is he's also teaching his children, and his family is very involved with us in teaching them how important it is to give back. So his kids are also very involved. Jeff gives up his hair once a year. He does grow it out for our St. Pauldrex event, which raises money for research. And we are honored and grateful today to accept a donation. And I want to also say that the Pennington, William and Pennington Foundation will be matching that donation 100% dollar-for-dollar. So your donation will be doubled, and that is part of our Know the Gold campaign.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Ms. Falcon Roberts, thank you so much for coming this morning. Vice Chairman, I want to point out one thing and have you speak to it, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, maybe we can move this up on the agenda, but it is item 11C1, because we, I recognize-
And we can do that.
That the two are directly connected, but the Board does need to take action before this donation can be put into place.
Yes, and we can do that. And when we do, we can open them if, in my opinion, and I'm going to look to Ms. Canderas, but I believe I can open 11C1 alongside of this morning's presentation so that we can take action on the donation from Commissioner Hartung's special disbursement funds in the amount of $10,000 to for this donation. Is that allowable?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I just wanted to say a couple of words, I want to say a couple of words about Sergeant McCaskill and then the foundation. The reason that I have Sergeant McCaskill here is because he gives above and beyond, and this is common, and we don't recognize how many deputies do this constantly. Firefighters do the same thing. This came to my attention because Sergeant McCaskill had been, he was the, and I don't even know how to define this properly. He arrived on the scene where a fellow had passed away while mowing his lawn from a heart attack. And he was one of the first responders. I get a little choked up even thinking about this story. And so sadly, they were not be able to revive the fellow. The lawn was half mowed. Sergeant McCaskill went back after his shift and mowed the lawn for this poor woman who had just lost her husband. It is my understanding that Sergeant McCaskill does these kinds of things constantly. And so because of that, and I knew that his passion is the Children's Cancer Foundation, the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. I wanted to help him to assist them. And there is something just inherently disturbing about a child with cancer. It's just so unfair. About a sick child, just in general, a very sick child. And I, my wife and I have endured this. Blessedly, our daughter made it through, but it's just inherently unfair. So it's my honor to support Sergeant McCaskill and to support the Children's Cancer Foundation. And I would encourage the Commissioners, how long, Ms. Falcon Roberts, how long does the match last?
The match will go from September 1st through February 4th, 2020.
So-
Or, excuse me, 2022.
2022.
Six months, just about six months.
Correct. So if any of you decide that you want to donate, it gets matched 100%. So we're actually putting, there's actually $20,000 going into their foundation, which is just, for me, it's just amazing. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman, and let you go through the other item, because I know that that has to be done, and maybe we can take a picture with them.
We can. And Sergeant, do you have any words that you'd like to share, or that's really quick? This morning?
Just very grateful for the opportunity. Thank you so much, Commissioner Hartung and Commissioners for being able to do this today. And again, great foundation. Everything is here locally, and we're helping local families. So I'm very grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant McCaskill. So I have item number three, and then also item number 11C1, which is a recommendation to approve the special district fund dispersment of amount of $10,000 for fiscal year 2021, 2022 from Commissioner Vaughn Hartung's District Four funds to a grant for Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation to support emotional and financial support for local kids fighting their lives against cancer. So I have both of those items open. Item three was for just an appearance and for discussion only, but 11C is for actions. So why at this time? Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk, on item 11C?
I have nobody signed in.
Alright, seeing nobody on 11C1. At this time, I'm looking for a motion. Do you have a motion?
Can I make a motion for my own dispersment of funds? Is that okay?
Yeah, you can, sir.
Motion, motion to approve, please.
I have a motion from my Vice Chair. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Hill on this item. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, let's take a brief recess and I'll take a picture with Northern Nevada Cancer Foundation and Mr. McCaskill. We'll take a brief recess. You may.
I just, I wanted to, I wanted to thank the Children's Cancer Foundation for the lovely plaque. Thank you so much. That's very generous. Again, it's my honor to support them.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I think you did a phenomenal job with them. Mr. Manager, that takes us to our next item, but this is item four, sir.
Item four is a presentation by Kendra Costalecki, Waste Management Northern Nevada, addressing the recycling education program, litter mitigation efforts by collection drivers, and customer survey scores.
Alright. Ms. Costalecki, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Take a moment to get settled here. Chair Lucy, members of the Board, for the record, I'm Kendra Costalecki, representing Waste Management this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, give you an update on what's going on in our area, and maybe answer some questions that you may have. So let's go ahead and jump right into it and start with the question that you most likely have received from your constituents, and that is, if I can figure out the clicker. Yeah.
Maybe we can advance it for you from the back.
Okay.
Is it working? Kendra, if you're having problems, I'll just have them advance it for you from the next.
Alright, thank you. So starting with the rate increase, which was effective May 1st of this year. Many people ask about the rate increase and why it occurs. And I just want to point out that it is part of the franchise agreement that Waste Management has with the county. That's Section 5.2 of the franchise agreement. It says that rates are adjusted on the year-over-year percentage change of Bureau Labor Statistic Consumer Price Index for garbage and trash. So that index is actually taken January to January, even though it's not implemented until May. The change this past year from January 2020 to January 2021 was 4.42. So for the average rate payer, this is how it breaks out in the increase that they saw in May. If you had a 32-gallon trash and a 64-gallon recycle, that was a 93-cent increase per month, $64.96, a $1 per month increase, and a $96.96 was a $1.22 per month increase. Another thing I'd like to touch on this morning is our recycling contamination education program. These are the letters that some people are receiving. This program was actually implemented in our area back in 2018. So we did expand it this past year, but it's not new to the area. And WM does a lot to educate about contamination. Some of the ways that we educate about contamination outside of this program are in your bill inserts, through conventional media. We do commercials. We do stories on the news, both print and broadcast. We do social media campaigns. We do direct phone, email, and text. And we have some webpages out there, including on the WM.com platform, to explain what should go in your container. But what we found is that these letters are the most impactful because they come directly to the person who contaminated and generally have a picture that show you what was in the container. So you know that that was the thing. And what we've seen is an impact and change from these letters. So from the beginning of this expanded, we wiped everybody clean last December, so nobody had any contaminations. And that matters because the program is a five-letter program. The first two letters are just a notification. This was what was found in your container. Please refer to the lid of your container. If these things continue to be in your container, the next two, the third and fourth notification, are also going to come with a fee. That fee is $12.95. And then you get a fifth notification with that $12.95 fee, and then the removal of your card. So since we started and wiped everybody clean beginning last December, 9,444 notification letters have been sent out. Only 490 of them got to that level where they were above two contaminations and carried that $12 fee. So what we're seeing is that most customers do respond. Once they get that letter, they go, oh, gosh, I didn't realize I couldn't do that. Now, if we get a letter and it's clearly not your container, or somebody walking in your neighborhood put something in your container, and you know it wasn't you, you can contact us, and we will generally work with you to remove that contamination or reset our system so that it doesn't happen to you again if it's, for instance, your neighbor's container. What the system also allows us to do is to see what the most common types of contamination are. There's a problem with this slide. Is this? There we go. Okay. That looks a little bit better. What we see is that most people use a liner in their recycling containers in their house, which makes sense. You don't want to have something sticky inside of one of your cans or your bottles. You don't want that dripping out inside of your house. But what we're asking people to do is to take that liner out to your blue-lid container, empty it, and then reuse that liner or put the liner in your trash can. Because when that film plastic, those bags or film plastic get inside of the recycling system, they wrap around, so it first goes through a manual sort. We have people who are pulling out trash. But if it gets past the people, it gets into the equipment, wraps around the equipment, and breaks it, which makes recycling more expensive for everyone. So we want to try to protect that equipment, make sure that we're only putting things that should be in the system, in the system. So 84% of that stuff is bags, and as we saw before with the behavioral changes, most of the time when people find out that they weren't supposed to put their bag in there, they stop putting, they stop putting bags in the recycling container.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question at this point, because I think it's important?
Yes.
So on that, Ms. Costalecki, we have a shredder. We have had for years. And it's a cross-shredder. And if I don't leave the contents in a bag, it's a nightmare. So how do you deal with that, with shredded paper? Because I mean, I can tell you right now, if I put that whole thing, when they took it up to dump it, it would be everywhere in my neighborhood.
You're absolutely right about that. And for two reasons, that's one of them. Paper under two inches in dimension, any dimension, is considered contamination. It's written in the list on the contract. But it's also something that we try to educate people about. Unfortunately, in this case, you have to make a choice on whether or not that paper, you want to recycle that paper or you want to shred that paper. So sensitive documents, you should shred it and trash it. But if they're not sensitive documents-
So you're telling me you can't take those, that shredded material?
Shredded material doesn't, no, it cannot be handled through single stream because if you were to come into the recycling center and see how it sorted, the same thing happens. There's a lot of mechanical processes. And when it hits those, I mean, it's not a terribly technological process. It's just kind of shaking things and breaking things and letting them fall off by their properties of weight and size. So when shredded paper gets into the system, just like you're describing in your neighborhood, it just becomes snow, and it's just difficult to capture. So for the purposes of single-stream recycling, shredded paper is not allowable. Thank you for asking that question. We do get that a lot. So the next most common kind of contamination that we see is foam packaging. Those may be the kinds of cups that you use if you're having a picnic, but it also may be the packing around your television, if you buy a new television, or something that's shipped to your home. Large plastics are 3.5, so you can see there is a dramatic drop-off from that film plastic. These are all tiny little pieces, but large plastics would be the next most common kind of contamination. And that's like your packing tubs or children's toys. HHW would be the next most common, and that's generally small electronics, like telephones. People know that it doesn't go in your garbage can, so they assume that it goes into the recycling, but that has to be handled differently entirely. Metal objects would be the next most common. I always tell the story, I replaced a door in my house and ended up with an aluminum door jamb at the end and thought, oh, I'm going to throw that in my recycling, because it's clearly aluminum. But that sharp piece of metal, once it gets up on that conveyor belt, could be very dangerous to one of the people who are sorting out trash. So we don't take it through single stream, but you can drop that off at Commercial Row as a piece of scrap metal for free. And then just general trash is the next kind of most common contamination that we would see in the system. This one, Commissioner Hartung, we've talked about a little bit. I want to address our litter mitigation efforts. So I've got here a picture of a ZR-style collection truck. And those are the kinds of collection trucks that you'll most often see in the rural route. So Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hartung, most common in your areas are these ZRs. And they call them a zipper truck, because you can see it's got that little zipper that lifts the can straight up and over onto the top. So the challenge with this kind of truck, of course, is that that hopper is on top, and it exposes it to more wind than the side hoppers, which are more common in more dense neighborhoods. So we have, based on your feedback and from the customer feedback, we have, drivers are coached in this in the beginning, but we have reiterated this coaching with them. And it's very simple, but it's very effective, to remind them to slow down because the slower they go, the less wind is being generated up on top. They should generally be going slower in neighborhoods anyway. To engage what they call a PACIS panel after every stop. So there's a panel on that hopper that pushes things back into the body of the truck, but it can also just hold that material down. So sometimes drivers, in their haste, will not engage that panel every time. So we're just reminding them to stop, hit the button, engage the panel every time before you hit the gas pedal. Also, we're encouraging them, reminding them, to watch for material that escapes from the truck. If they haven't taken these first steps and material escapes from the trucks, we want them to stop and clean up those spills. They should be stopping to clean up those spills. And if they don't, please do let us know. So what happens when you call Waste Management or you engage with us online? We have a customer service company. It's an outside company called Concentrix CX that does customer surveys by phone and by online. How you choose to engage with us, they will engage with you. They won't call you and randomly offer you a survey. But if you call and make contact or email us, chat us, and make contact, afterwards you'll be given the opportunity to stay on the line and fill out a survey. And that's to get us feedback to show where we can improve. Now, of course, we've all had that opportunity, maybe calling a bank to stay online. And I personally don't usually stay for those surveys unless something has made me very upset. So I think that these results are that much more impactful, given that mindset. This is, this is a snapshot of just last month from our scores specific to Washoe County. We have 37,103 residential customers in Washoe County right now. And just for purposes of this presentation, I've only polled residential results. We do have 401 commercial customers as well. So per month, we get about 65 customers from Washoe County who will stay around and fill out their survey after they're done conducting business with us. So looking just at this snapshot here for September, the question that they were asked is kind of across the top there. So starting from the top left, the overall satisfaction that we were scored on a score of, I'm not going to answer you, 1 through 10. The mean answer is 8.7. On Trustworthy last month, we got an 8.21. It's not always that high. Waste Solutions Partner, an 8.01. And Do People Feel We're a Good Value, 8.42. So I dove down a little bit more. I'm going to give you just a few of the questions that they're asked. People are asked about a dozen questions. Again, they can answer them or they can score us on a score of 1 to 10. And I apologize, this might be a little bit difficult to read, but I wanted you to see the full breakdown of the score so it didn't look like I was chairpicking answers to try to make us look a little bit better. I wanted you to get a full picture here. So this first question is, how satisfied are you with the following? Waste collection consistency and reliability? So 604 people out of 626 people answered this question and scored a mean 8.2. So about 47.7% gave us a 10. But we see on the lower end of the scale, we've got 3.8% of people scoring a 1 and we have zero people opting out of that. On clear communication, thinking about the last six months, how would you rate Waste Management on the following clear communication? 477 people out of 626 answered this question and scored an 8.62 mean. Oh, no, I did it now. Went too fast. So thinking about the last six months, how would you rate Waste Management on the placement of the container, putting your container back in the correct location? Believe it or not, this is a common concern for people. And so it's important for us to ask this question. In this case, only 79 people out of 626 answered the question, but they scored an 8.15 mean. Question, thinking about the last six months, how would you rate Waste Management on just picking up waste? Waste collection, picking up waste. 477 out of 626 answered and scored 8.68. Trustworthy. So this is for the year of 2021. How well would you describe Waste Management as a company? Can we be trusted to do the right thing? 626 people out of 626 people answered this question and scored a 6.65 mean. Overall, and this is for the year 2021, up to the end of September, overall, how would you score, how are you satisfied with Waste Management? 626 responses out of 626, 8.13. So after they're done entering scores for the questions that they've been asked, people are also given the opportunity to leave a comment about things that they are upset about, concerned about, would like to see WM do or to leave a compliment because there are some people who do just call to say that they love their driver. Ooh, this did not turn out well. Maybe that'll adjust itself. In the meantime, I'll start reading you some of them. So I pulled a couple of negative ones, a couple of positive ones and a neutral one just to give you a feel for what we're getting. "The driver didn't empty my trash again and it's full. He thought he shook it out, but it's still packed full. The only problem I have is with the notification I received on contamination, contaminating the recycle. I'm very careful not to place anything that I'm not supposed to. The notice I received had a very bad photo and I could not see the problem. I hope this is not set against me." "Service is great. Would like to see you do green waste, compost recycle like at our home in West Sacramento, California. Also e-waste pickup twice a year like in California. We want better access to transfer stations. Long lines are ridiculous. Driver that comes to the house gets an A+. Need a place to dump antifreeze for free. Excellent service. The driver who has my area, extremely courteous, doesn't leave trash on the ground. Professional." So one of the biggest challenges that we have, even though we're using many different ways to communicate with our customers, if you're just not where we're trying to hit you, we're going to miss you. So we encourage people to register their account online. That way, if there's a weather incident or some other fire problem that we can't get to you or an event that's being run, we can email you directly or hit you where you want to be communicated with. Oftentimes, you sign up for service when you buy your house. You may have had a landline at the time. You don't update your account and now you're not getting the text or the calls. You're not getting text messages. You're not getting emails. So this is an opportunity to make sure that you're making the most of the services that you have and taking advantage of those free services like your free dumps or your free collection at the curb that you're being reminded of this stuff. So you can set up auto pay, but you do not have to set up auto pay to take advantage of this option. And one of the concerns that we get from landlords is that their tenants aren't getting that kind of information. Forgive me, this is my bill, so I scribbled out some information. But I wanted to point out that if you own a property that somebody else is living in, so you maybe are paying the bill, but you're also getting the communication about recycling contamination and you want them to get it. You can assign a service contact so that you're paying the bill, but they're getting the information they need to make the most of the services that are available. And before I wrap up, I just want to add a couple more things on the record. So October is the third month of WM's 2021 HHW Collection Program. The ratepayer is not charged for that program. And we are on track to collect more than a million pounds of HHW this year. So for a benchmark, our previous events maxed out at 5,000 pounds of HHW. So we're way exceeding what we've done in the past. And part of this effort is also to make our customers familiar with HHW handling businesses, non-WM businesses that operate in the community all year round, that you can go to anytime you want to and just pay them for disposal. And also, Washoe County does have free collection at the curb, or not free, but included with your service. No stickers necessary in May and November. So November's coming up. If you've got some things you're cleaning out, remember you can put some stuff at the curb every week on your collection day, up to six bags, without stickers for collection in November. And that's all my prepared remarks.
Marvelous. This is Kostalecki. Thank you so much for that presentation this morning. I do appreciate it. I think that brings up a wealth of information for individuals, but also probably a multitude of questions for the commissioners. So I'm going to turn it over to my commissioners. And first signed in, I have Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to let you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you, Kendra. Kendra has helped with many of these river cleanups that I've talked to the board about and supplied free dumpsters for those. So thank you so much for doing that. And I also want to compliment the drivers that I have interacted with. You have a great team, so I commend you for that. I have a few questions. A number of people getting their recycling dumpster or container taken away. You know how we had discussed previously? I was worried like we were going to have a bunch of people just stop recycling. Is there a number that you... Because at one point you were like, no, I don't think anyone has had it taken away, but I'm sure the program's gone longer. So do you have a number for that?
So we have had some people forfeit their recycling cans because they didn't want to participate. I would say through the program itself, we've taken away less than 30 this year. More often, when we identify those, even though the threat is that we're going to take away your recycling container more often, what our team is doing is trying to figure out why this is occurring, why that information isn't getting to the end user and how we can accommodate and facilitate them continuing with the program but discontinuing the contamination.
Right, yeah. And I see it in my neighborhood and I'm like, I want it, like I want to dump it and jump in and like pull it out. So it bothers me. But that's good to hear that it's not a lot of customers. I just want to make sure that we're really pushing recycling. And then on that note, we had a great group who's committed to reducing their plastic use in our community. And I was wondering if you could just state for the record, what plastic numbers are you allowing for today in the recycling?
So the program allows for plastics 1 through 7 minus 6, which is styrofoam.
Oh, yes.
So styrofoam is not allowed. But the markets change, so the most highly recyclable plastics are plastics 1, 2, and 3. And then they get increasingly more difficult to recycle from thereon. And when they're more difficult to recycle, the manufacturers are less likely to purchase them.
Right.
So we still accept them, but in some cases, we have difficulty, especially since, excuse me, since we're focusing on domestic markets, we have more difficulty recycling them. I think it's important to clarify that Waste Management doesn't actually recycle anything. They separate the commodities and sell it to end users.
Right.
You know? So it's more difficult as a nation for us to recycle those plastics.
Yeah, so I think we've got to figure out, maybe it's on the county level, Mr. Chairman, of talking to people about the plastics that they purchased to ensure that, you know, they understand that some of these won't be recycled and, you know, doing some sort of campaign, maybe even with Waste Management.
Happy to do that. Yeah, happy.
Yeah, and I'll put you in touch with this group that's really trying to reduce their, you know, plastic and waste consumption as well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Kendra, what do we do with shredded paper? Financial institutions probably have large amounts of this. Businesses have large amounts of paper. I mean, not everybody's... I mean, there's still paper being used everywhere and it's being shredded because it has sensitive information on it, whether it's credit card information or information about, you know, health issues or whatever it happens to be. What are you... How can we deal with that?
Sure. So again, and I hate to state it this way because I don't want you to think that I'm not concerned about it. But so we're definitely making a choice there between shredding for privacy and recycling. So if there's things that don't have to be shredded, don't shred those. Stick them whole into the recycling container. But for those items that you're talking about, those sensitive documents, there are some other entities in town that specialize in that kind of paper, like Shred It or some other companies. But for purposes of recycling, again, we're doing the... Waste Management is trying to collect items that can be reused by other companies. And if it can't be condensed down into a commodity that can then be recycled, that's where the actual recycling happens. It's a wasted effort on your part to put it in the recycling.
Yeah, I'm bothered by this, but I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up this morning?
I do. Hi, Ms. Kostalecki. Thanks for being here today. Do you... When you say household hazardous waste, am I correct or incorrect in putting in there e-waste? Where does Waste Management play a role in electronic waste? Or is that under the household hazardous waste?
So yeah, electronic... Very good question. Electronic waste falls under household hazardous waste. And there are a couple of companies in town that are permitted and licensed to do that. Life Cycle Solutions would be one of them down on Greg Street. They're a great partner of ours. We are working with Graymar right now for some of the other items. I think that they send electronic waste to a third-party processor as well because these items have to be handled differently. So, sorry, short answer to your question, you're correct. Electronics don't belong in your recycling container. They are household hazardous waste.
So for the month of November, we can put those out in a bag?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Oh, sorry.
That's extra waste collection. So that's anything that's normal trash, but you don't have to put a sticker on it. You can leave it at the curb for collection. In October, so this year, in May, July, and October, we sent out vouchers to our customers to take advantage of the business, Graymar Environmental's HHW processing at WM's expense. So you could take your stuff to them at WM's expense. However, Graymar and Hero Environmental are still in the community all year round and they'll still take those things that you can't put in your trash can.
But that also includes a fee, correct?
Yeah, they're a separate business. They are not a WM business.
Okay. And then when you did your surveys, do you guys ever ask survey questions about recycling specifically? Because I don't see it as recycling-specific questions. In terms of what you have presented today, it doesn't mean you're not asking it. Just don't see it.
Yeah, no. So when you say ask a question about recycling, like, do they like recycling? Or is there a specific area of recycling that you'd like to see surveyed?
You know, ease, understanding. Is it satisfying for them for their recycling needs? Because not, you know, typically in any organization, if you don't measure it, we're not paying attention to it. I'm not saying that here. You might have a whole thing of data. And to Commissioner Hill's point, I would like to be involved with the groups and groups and help with the messaging or, you know, a support that Washoe County as a board should be working on this with both cities to reduce plastic use because we know that it's... I mean, even when you do recycle plastic, we haven't lived long enough to know whatever will happen to plastic. You know, 50,000 years, they think it's going to last. So I think a regional quality-of-life measure that we could do as partners and positive would be teaching people, not only, most importantly, right, for the environment is, don't use them or reduce your use of them. And when you do reduce your use of them, make sure that they are the commodity that the local Waste Management Company is able to recycle. And I know that that goes with the vagaries of any other market. And I know that you owning your own dump puts the Waste Management in a very different position than vis-à-vis West Sacramento saying that they... The woman from West Sacramento, which I agree with her, would like to see e-waste, but her Waste Management in Northern Nevada is a whole different ballgame because you own the landfill, not you, of course, Kendra, we wish. Waste Management owns the landfill and they also own the transport. And I know they take other people who are putting waste into their landfill that they charge. And it's also who we brought up on the record, and I really don't know what kind of control you have other than just to be aware of it. We have noticed across this county, a high degree of litter everywhere. And we don't know, is it coming from Waste Management? Dropping, you know, things falling off, flying off. And I know that that happens. Trust me, there's no way that you can make this perfect. But I also have been behind some haulers who are not Waste Management, who go to the Lockwood Dumping and pay Waste Management to put their refuse there and do not have any concern. It appears to me, right, just an N of 1, that they have no concern about how much of it is flying off the truck all the way from where I see them is off Highway 20 down by Grass Valley all the way to Lockwood. So just be aware that we're noticing that around here. And I don't know what we can do to make that better. But if Waste Management does have something to encourage the haulers who are paying them to dump there, to be mindful of the community that they're going through and that we expect, you know, like we do with everything else, we expect better behavior. So and as I said, I'm not sure how much you have control over it, but we have fielded quite a few complaints. And when I say we, I mean the royal we. I've complained about this a lot. And it's not just in my neck of the woods, too. It's all over the county. So I thank you so much, Ms. Kostalecki, and I appreciate you in this role. I think you're doing a great job. And please reach out to us. I don't know who will be in charge of it, but I think Commissioner Hill is right on it with the plastics education and recycling education for this community. And I appreciate Waste Management going to the single stream and encouraging recycling. It wasn't like that about 10 years ago. So I believe we've made great strides, but I think we are right for a big education push just to help people who are confused about what works here in Washoe County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you. Can I respond to that?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Kostelaki.
And thank you, Commissioner Jung. I just want to circle back to the question at the top and say that if there are specific questions that you would like to be added to the survey, we can work with Concentrix to get that information. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Kostelaki. Vice Chairman, may I be sorry?
Yes, I wanted to dovetail on a comment that Commissioner Jung made. And I think, to her point, the e-waste. What we're seeing is, is because there's not an easy way for people to dispose of it, they just take it out in the desert and dump it, thinking that that's an okay thing to happen. We see tons of it in Sun Valley. We see it out in Spanish Springs. The people who live in the more urbanized areas, they don't see that. Or even the suburban, the suburban areas, they don't see that kind of dumping because they're not out in those outer, you know, hinterland areas. I think it's incumbent upon us to work with Waste Management and the partners to figure out how people can easily dispose of those items. Because if it's not easy for people to dispose of it, they can't figure it out easily, you know, they'll pitch it out somewhere in, you know, just in the desert or in one of the outer neighborhoods. I mean, we see it out, again, in Spanish Springs. See that kind of stuff all the time, just random dumping in what they think to be an open lot, you know, just or an open area. So I think this begs a deeper conversation of how we can deal with some of this stuff. And I'm sure it's happening down in District Two. I'm sure it happens out in the, again, the outer areas in District One. I know it's in Five. I know it's in Four. I'm sure Commissioner Jung in Sun Valley, District Three. So this touches all of our districts of e-waste. And I think what we need to do is have the conversation with our regional partners, with the City of Reno and the City of Sparks and Waste Management and the people who do the recycling of these materials of what's an easy way, and here's what I'll tell you, and this is going to sound maybe a little flippant, but it honestly is cheaper. I think it's cheaper for us to subsidize the dumping of these materials as opposed to sending out crews and picking it up out of the desert. That's very, very costly, and it's very invasive in those areas. And most of the time, by the way, they're not dumping it on public land. They dump it on somebody's property, a 40-acre parcel that they think is public land, but it's not. And so those are, or 10-acre parcels or wherever, it's, so it's a little disconcerting that there isn't an easy way to deal with this. So I think we, you know, somewhat of a deeper dive to just say, look, what would it really cost us? And try to do, you know, some type of a work backwards to see what the savings could potentially be. Because I know we spend many, 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 many thousands of dollars. And the Sheriff's Office has been wonderful with their work crews on public lands. But if it's a private piece of property, the work crews cannot legally go on to clean up illegal dumping.
So, you know, I think based upon, there's a lot of comments here. And Mrs. Kostelaki, I do appreciate you coming to do a presentation tomorrow. And there are a few more questions that, but I think what we probably need to do is have you come back and actually have an agendaized item that we can have a discussion with you and potentially take some action. Maybe look at amending the franchise agreement and what we can do to address some of these issues, because there are, seems to be quite a few. Even though the service is good, there are some issues we'd still like to probably address. And maybe some, not just yourself, but maybe some of the higher-ups within WM can come and address some of these concerns that we've brought here today. So maybe we can do that at a future date in a future meeting. Commissioner Herman, I know you had some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sorry. Good mask. Little history lesson. In the, back in the early days of this garbage stuff, the whole purpose of getting Waste Management or any other garbage company involved was because of all the stuff that was spread all over the county. And so the promise was always that they would handle it in some way, that they would be generous enough to pick up things that weren't easily disposed of and that sort of thing, so they didn't end up out in the desert. Sun Valley gets real, really messy on their public lands as well as private lands. So that's been a disappointment. And, you know, I originally voted against this last contract because the people in the rurals are different. They have different garbage. Personally, I couldn't even begin to fill up the, you know, specialized cans. So I pay for two cans, regular ones. So there's some changes that probably, you know, in respect of the people out in the rurals that I represent, it would, you know, it doesn't fit. So, and I said that before, and that's why I voted against it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Ms. Kostelaki, I think that we've seen a definite improvement. I do have seen the response from your team here locally that has really been cognizant of the issues around, at least within the city limits. However, I feel that, to Commissioner Herman's point, we are losing some of that service out in the rurals. And I've heard this, for example, at the end of Toll Road, no longer do they have at-home or at their home pickup. They've been provided a 32-yard dumpster that they have to either go and dump into, and it gets dumped once in a while. But they have to do their own, very much as if it was in a rural part of Nevada that doesn't see weekly service. And so I'd like to know how many of these locations throughout the county. And I only know of the one at Toll Road, but are there more in Washoe Valley? Are there more in District Two and Three, Four? I mean, one in Five as well. I mean, I want to know how many of these, you know, we can't service your house directly, so we're going to have you either haul your can all the way to the road all at the same time, or, you know, we're going to give you a joint pickup for a dumpster for you to dump into. You know, those types of discussions, I want to know some of those details, too, for a future item. And also kind of what we intend to do for those off-road, those more rural areas that have dirt roads, not all paved roads. Are we still doing at-home pickup for those individuals as well? So I'd kind of like to have a little bit more detail about that, potentially at a next item in regards to this, so we have some more detail for our customers. So, all right. Thank you very much for coming today. I do really appreciate it. Thank you for all the information. I think people will be very happy to be able to put some extra trash out in the month of November. And thank you to the franchise agreement. And another thing, you know, the Commission, I want to be aware of is that Waste Management's been a very good partner, and a lot of that, there is a portion of that franchise free that comes back to the county for use of different cleanup products through, whether that's KTMB or a number of different organizations that we utilize those funds for. And so we do have those funds available through the franchise agreement to do some of these specific projects. So thank you, Ms. Kostelaki. We do, it's nice to see you again, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving quickly here, we are on to Item Five. Mr. Manager.
Item Five is a certificate or certificates honoring the following Washoe County employees who have completed essential employee development courses. And, Mr. Chair, and for the Commission, we have two folks that we're recognizing today. The first is Stephanie Martell, who's an Office Support Specialist for the Assessors Department and has completed the Essentials of High-Performing Teams and Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff's Certificate Programs and the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Programs. Is Stephanie with us today? In chambers? No? Well, let's congratulate Stephanie on her accomplishment there. And then, secondly, it's Magali Cook, I'm sorry, who's Human Services Support Specialist Two for the Human Services Agency and who has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. And congratulations to Magali. Is she here? Yes, she is. Put your stand. Congratulations. The certificates will be delivered separately, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And once again, we want to thank all the employees that take the extra time. This is, these are not programs that are part of their normal business schedule, but they take an initiative to invest in their own private and personal growth. This is an opportunity that the county provides for them, and we want to thank them for all the extra time that they put into continuing to help us grow and continue to create a great workforce here at Washoe County. So thank you very much for that, to both of the recipients. All right, now we are on to Item Six. Mr. Manager.
Item Six is Public Comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
Certainly. First up, we have Janet Butcher, followed by Stuart Handy.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
I request that this body support and declare an end to the State of Emergency declared on March 12, 2020 by Nevada's Governor Steve Sisalak. There should be no COVID-19 experimental injection mandates for county, city, and other employees as well as the citizenry. The essential workers of last year who worked all during the time, an experimental injection under emergency measures was not available. They are being forced to either succumb to an injection or lose their jobs. What an ungrateful lot of bureaucrats we have. Thank goodness Southwest and Delta Airlines have dropped their mandate. Let the silver birds fly. There is no public health emergency. The county remains captive under the Emergency Declaration, which continues with no justification. This continues to enable bureaucrats to continue to enact unconstitutional mandates and restrictions. Ban the experimental injection passports and any and all means, methods of verifying the medical status of any citizens for purposes of participation in society. The COVID-19 injection verification has no other purpose than to construct a two-tiered society resulting in segregation and discrimination based upon medical status. Who is profiting besides the pharmaceutical companies? Who has stock in these injections? Who is getting kickbacks? Objection to succumbing to an experimental injection does not make one an anti-vaxxer nor a flat-earther.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Next up, we have Stuart Handy, followed by Bruce Foster.
Welcome, Mr. Handy.
Morning. Commissioner Herman, I excuse you for my public comment and statement this morning. To the rest of you, a few months ago, I made some pretty serious allegations presented here at this board meeting involving the Washoe County District Attorney's Office and, in specific, Washoe County Deputy District Attorney Amos Steggi, who obtained illegally confidential information from my Internal Affairs files when I was a state trooper with Nevada Highway Patrol and an agency I served with for 20 years. That was a violation not only of his ethical duties as a licensed bar attorney in Nevada, but also violation of NRS. Without my authorization, Mr. Steggi obtained that confidential information to try and get me thrown back in jail based on a series of lies and fabrications set forth by current law enforcement officers with Reno Police Department, the Washoe County District Attorney's Office, and a current Washoe County Deputy District Attorney, Chief Criminal Investigator. Mr. Steggi presented to the Reno Justice of Peace, Ryan Sullivan, prior to my March 11, 2021 hearing, at which he stated these lies and fabrications. And then he went further and presented the confidential information that he obtained illegally. All of these criminal acts were set forth upon me through the authority of Washoe County District Attorney Christopher Hicks. After I made these serious allegations to all of you through the actions of Mr. Steggi, I further presented a request for public records documentation based on NRS 239 regarding specific communications between Mr. Steggi and a list of others on that document that I handed over to your clerk of records at that meeting. To my dismay, not only do my allegations of criminal misconduct go unanswered, but so did my public records request. It goes to the people who employ Mr. Steggi, Mr. Brown, not the Nevada Bar Association. And what have you done here, all? Not a damn thing. Therefore, I'm demanding a second time through oral presentation a public records request under NRS 239 of all public records requests through Mr. Steggi, cell phone logs and records, text messages, voicemails and emails, and also a list of people I present to the clerk today involving their names as well. Additionally, and most importantly, I further demand that you list the aid of an outside law enforcement investigatory agency outside the boundaries of this state to investigate the criminal actions of the Washoe County District Attorney's Office and specific Deputy District Attorney Amos Steggi. I will await a response from any one of you in attendance today. If you fail to respond or disregard this demand, I will seek all legal remedies against either one of you, with the exception of you, Commissioner Herman. Do not underestimate my tenacity and resolve, ladies and gentlemen, as former Reno Police Chief Richard Kirkland, former Washoe County Sheriff Richard Kirkland, and former Nevada Department of Public Safety Director Richard Kirkland, how much he underestimated me. And here I am standing today. One more question I have to ask. How did Susan Heligas die? That's what I thought.
Bruce Foster, followed by Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome, Mr. Foster.
Yeah. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster, Sparks, Nevada, a second-class citizen according to the gentleman.
Can we get the overhead, please?
Up there, well, it's not there, but to this administration. But we, the people, request that this Commission place on the agenda and pass resolutions, including the following, which I'm essentially echoing Janet's issues. Declare an end to the State of Emergency declared March 12, 2020 by Nevada's Governor Steve Sisalak. No COVID-19 vaccine mandates for county, city, other employees, as well as we, the people. There is no public health emergency. The county remains captive under the Emergency Declaration, which continues with no justification. And this will enable bureaucrats to continue to enact unconstitutional mandates and restrictions. Ban vaccine passports and any and all other means, methods of verifying the medical status of citizens for purposes of participation in society. Vaccine verification has no other purpose than to construct a two-tiered society resulting in segregation and discrimination based upon medical status. And ban a mask mandates. Of course, the wearing of masks has conflicting science behind it. Ultimately, it should be a matter of consultation with one's physician to apply a medical device to one's face. Include education for the citizens regarding the preventive protocols that can start to strengthen their immune systems. This is particularly important on how the autumn has arrived and winter is three months away. And the county and Health District has failed to provide simple education regarding good health practices with regard to the COVID-19 crisis. And we can see a common thread here that we have not, we, the people, been given a real choice, unfortunately. And I don't know if anybody saw Tucker Carlson last night. He pretty much summed it up as he states, America has become segregated between the clean and unclean, basically the vaxxed and the unvaxxed. And this individual perpetuates that, and it seems to snowball down to, unfortunately, at this level, and we see that on the media. And everyone has a choice. And Colin Powell had that choice. He got vaxxed. Donald Abbott, our councilman, had that choice, espousing the use of the vaccine. But we also want to recognize the importance of getting the education out there, the preventative and therapeutics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Catherine Snedeker, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Welcome, Ms. Snedeker.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised natural woman. So, that means your rules and regulations don't apply to me. They just don't apply to me. And I proved that to this county when they tried to give me a zoning violation with a lot of threats attached to it. And I just sent them some letters, and suddenly it just fell away. They weren't interested in talking to me anymore after I submitted my documents. They didn't answer any of them right either. And your code enforcement people need to learn right now that they may not come on to your property arbitrarily. They can come on to your property only if you give them permission to, or they're there with a sheriff and a warrant. Other than that, they have zero authority to trespass on my property. And when you try to make them leave, they have a fit. "Oh, but you need a permit." "No, I don't, and you're trespassing. Get off my property." "But you don't have a permit, and you're still trespassing. Get off my property." "But we got a call, and you're still trespassing. Get off my property." So, the law says that you can take pictures of the property from a public street. Well, he went and took pictures, but he wasn't on a public street. He was on a private road. So, he had no authority to take any pictures of my property. I'm really sick and tired of you people breaking the law, not following your own rules and regulations, and trying to put it on the people that we're the ones that are wrong. 1,334 new cases today, 29 deaths. You know what that means? That means 1,305 people didn't die. Now, if you reverse those numbers, then you could call it a pandemic. 29 new cases, 1,334 deaths. That would be a pandemic. But 29 people out of 1,334 is a pandemic? You're out of your minds. And I'm sick and tired of some of these people on this commission that think they can boss me around. You can't. Just like I travel with no license and no registration on my truck, I am following the law. You don't follow the law. You don't have an administrative manual that shows us how you create your codes. And that's illegal, and that's a federal thing you have to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Aaron Massengale.
For the record, Nicholas St. John. Thanks for getting that right this time. I'm going to continue to speak on the things that we've heard so many of my fellow citizens talk about. And so, for the record, we want to demand a scientific panel be convened to present scientific evidence and facts for maintaining that Washoe County should remain under an, while we believe is an unconstitutional state of emergency, with the doctors from the health district and two or three panels of the choice of we, the people. We've asked for that before. I know there have been people have been asking that since December 15th of last year. And yet, we have not seen you guys respond at all. We also demand a resolution prohibiting a vax passport or a press release why each commissioner in writing opposes this item. We demand a resolution making Washoe County a Second Amendment sanctuary county, or again, a press release or a document in writing why each commissioner would oppose this item. We demand the county stop counting cases, which you guys had agreed to during the quote-unquote "local," I'm not even sure what they called it, but it was when it was given by the state back down to the local level, and you had decided that we would stop counting cases. Cases we should be counting, hospitalizations. Cases are subject to manipulation, and you guys know it. As Health Officer Dick boasted at the last health district meeting, he boasted that cases had increased because they had increased the number of people being tested. Guys, I'm not sure how you guys sit here, week after week, listening to us demand that you do something that makes sense. There is science, and you're not listening to it. So, as we stand here demanding that you do something that helps us resolve this issue of state of emergency that we do not believe is constitutional, you have not redressed our grievances, which is our First Amendment rights. So, we're looking for some kind of feedback. We are looking for a panel that we can have a public discussion. We've been asking for this since December of last year. We look forward to you doing something that addresses these issues.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
Aaron Massengale, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Good morning. I'm going to request again, as I have for several weeks, that we agendize and pass resolutions that end the public health emergency, and additionally, that we ban vaccine passports. As I stated last week, in California, we have counties in California, not rural California, in metropolitan areas, that are now considering banning vaccine passports because we know that it's morally wrong. Last week, I had a friend fired. He is a nurse in California because he is refusing the vaccine. He's also refusing to be tested. It is a sad state when we are now having to choose between employment and our moral principles, the difference between right and wrong. Additionally, I had a friend this morning who is now moving out of state for the same reason, because her husband is a federal employee who has a heart condition, and the only way that he will be able to be considered exempt is if he decides that he is disabled, which he is not. I'd like to implore you to actually look at your conscience. What we're experiencing right now is segregation, is fear-based and not science-based. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massengale.
Melanie Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Sutton, for the record. I'd also like to demand an end to the public, the state of emergency declared on March 12th, 2020 by Nevada's Governor Steve Sislak. No COVID-19 vaccine mandates for county, city, and other employees as well as the citizens. There is no public health emergency. The county remains captive under the emergency declaration, which continues with no justification. This will enable bureaucrats to continue to enact unconstitutional mandates and restrictions. Ban vaccine passports and all other means and methods of verifying the medical status of citizens for the purpose of participation in society. Vaccine verification has no other purpose than to construct a two-tiered society resulting in segregation and discrimination based upon medical status. Ban mask mandates. The wearing of masks has conflicting science behind it. Ultimately, it should be a matter of consultation with one's physician to apply a medical device to one's face, including education for the citizens regarding the preventative protocols they can start to strengthen their immune system. This is particularly important now that autumn has arrived and winter is three months away. The county commissioners and the health district have failed to provide simple education regarding good health practices with regard to the COVID-19 crisis. So, my aunt passed away probably a month ago, I think now, and she has stage four larycancer, but she happened to have COVID at the time of her death. Guess what's on her death certificate?
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
I have nobody else signed in, but I do have emails to place on the record from Pamela Sigdenos and Elise Weatherly.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll place those emails on the record. Seeing a further public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we're on to item seven, sir.
Item seven is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of announcements following up. I would like to remind the public that our redistricting public comment period closes this Friday, which is the 22nd. So, we've received some input online and through our drop boxes in our libraries, but if you have not had a chance, please do so before this Friday, the 22nd. Secondly, as an update on our shelters, as of this morning, we had about eight beds open at our place. We had about, we have 14 open at the men's campus, care's campus. We are working on a dashboard for the public to be able to see on a real-time basis or daily basis what the bed counts are at each of our facilities. Hope to have that in the near future. We've also been communicating with our partners in Reno on the bed situation so that we can have better coordination. The warming room is now open, which is in the sprung structure of the shelter, and we continue to closely monitor capacity needs. Mr. Chair, those are my announcements for this morning.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Commissioner Hill, I'll have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that announcement, Eric. I think to just reiterate on the warming center that is open, that means literally anyone who needs to get off the street and/or off the river and needs to stay warm, whether they stay at our campus or not, can go to that center. So, it's really important for people to know that we're not turning anyone away and that they can go there throughout the winter and that we are providing warmth for our community. The other thing that I would like to announce is that tonight, we have a short-term rental workshop, and we want to hear the community's comments on how our ordinance is going. It's tonight at 5:00 PM. You can find out more information at washoecounty.gov/str, and hope to see you on Zoom at that event. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, sir. I, well, Commissioner Hartung has kind of requested that I report on the WI conference in Salt Lake City. I think it's probably the hardest-working bunch of commissioners and supervisors and judges in NACO. I mean, they really, really work hard and get stuff done. They're always in Washington, DC, talking to legislators and this sort of thing, and solving the problems of the West. You know, we have a lot of issues out here. Some of the things that make it harder for us out here is the lack of private land. We have, like our county, for instance, it's in the 80% rate for public lands, and so our tax base is not large. So, that is a definite problem. We discussed a lot of things. I'm on the Public Land Steering Committee and the Rural Action Caucus for NACO. And we shared a lot of information. We try to educate the folks from back east on what goes on out here. And sometimes they get really surprised at some of the things that we have to put up with out here that they don't have to worry about back there. Wild horse issues and things like that. So, I won't take any more of your time on that, but there's a lot of new legislation coming back at us on sage grouse and like Bear's Ears is being closed again, and a few things like that. So, a lot of discussion, lots of concerns. My other two items are, again, I wish that we could stop this COVID public health emergency in Washoe County for the sake of the people and our country. And number two is, I still would like to have a forensic audit of our last election and especially our voter rolls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Herman, for that update. Hopefully, they're taking up some of the same things that we are, WOTUS especially, where we don't get dry stream beds included in the waters of the US. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your participation there. The Children's Cancer Foundation presented me with a wonderful plaque. Mr. Manager, I think that this should be hung in the, this belongs to the county, and this should be hung in the manager's office in the front area. This is something that the county has participated in, and I'm honored to have them give it to us, but I think that the public should know that these are the kinds of things that the county is involved in. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner John, do you have anything this morning?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I have really great news for all of you, and that is Marcy Cooper-Smith. I'm sure you all know and remember Marcy, who she served in our Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board on the Reno one, on the Sparks one now. She's an ex-fistio and has been deeply involved with senior issues as long as I've known her, which is 14 years. She was one of three statewide nominees, and Councilman Abbott actually was the one that put in her packet, and she won the Nevada Senior Citizen of the Year, State of the Year on Saturday. And it was a giant gala event at the W down in Las Vegas. Of course, I didn't go because of the risk meter of Washoe County and Las Vegas of the transmission rate of COVID, but I wanted to let you know, Marcy won the statewide Nevada State Senior Citizen of the Year. And because I do believe Councilman Dare was able to surprise her and escort her on the stage, I also said that I would use the rest of my campaign account to, which is like $600, don't get excited, to help throw her a party in Sparks when COVID is at a moderate or lower transmission level. And I just wanted you all, you share that. You helped with all of this as well. I wrote a letter, one of the letters of support, but she is our golden girl as well, and I am just, I am not surprised, but I am very, very proud of her and elated. So, be on the lookout for some sort of event for us to do to honor her up here, since she was honored by our partners down in southern Nevada for a statewide winner out of three nominees who made it to the final cut, the three nominees to cut. So, that's all that I have, Mr. Chairman. I'm very excited for this.
Thank you, Commissioner John. We do appreciate that. And congratulations to Marcy. She is absolutely, as you stated, a true, true public servant that gives all for nothing, and she is awesome. She is fantastic. Has really enjoyed working with her over the years, and that's an honor well-deserved on her behalf. A couple of things that I wanted to point out, we don't have a proclamation today for this, but I wanted to make note of it. You know, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For all of you, most of us have either had a friend or a family, a member that's been impacted by cancer, and I think it's prudent, having the discussion, as the vice chair pointed out, cancer is nothing for any child to have to go through, but for those women in your life that are often impacted by this, we at the county have always taken a pride in supporting National Breast Cancer Awareness Month for our colleagues and our friends and family members that are impacted by this. So, just wanted to point out that October, and make sure you wear your pink when you get an opportunity to do that, you know, and support national breast cancer. Make your donations if possible. A couple of other things, over the weekend, I did take some time with my son to go kind of travel between Story County and Washoe County on our, on property out there. The wild- The wild horse, I did get to see the cattle guards that were installed between the county and the state to kind of prevent some of the travel of the wild horses and burrows. I was disappointed to see that some of the gates have already been hit and broken and destroyed and bent pretty good by cars. Evidently, people not liking gates that they're not locked, just have to undo them and not hit them. But the burrow issue and horses, wild horse and burrow issue seems to be getting just as bad. We want to remind people, please don't feed the animals. They are, it is illegal to feed the animals. It does draw them closer to the community where they can be not only a nuisance but also impact, they can be harmed very close to home. Another issue that's happening in District Two, and I know for sure in District One, are the bear issues. I had an opportunity to sit with Deputy Director Rob of Endow last week. He showed me a number of bear issues, and the Endow has done against a lot of consternation between those pro and against bear relocation. They've relocated bears a number of times, tagged and tried to create safe havens for these bears, and yet he showed me a picture of a 400-pound sow that was caught in the Tapazalezi area, taken down to the Southern Carson Range, and had traveled back within a week's time back to Arrow Creek and lives between, and you can see multiple times where they ping him between Arrow Creek and Holcomb Ranch, and he just walks up and down and eats trash, and he's pretty consistent. So bear issues, I know inclined village residents deal with this a lot with bear boxes, and to the point where even bears are breaking into garages. If you have a wood, if you have a wooden garage door to get access to garbage, be cognizant about that, especially through the winter. Maybe it'll start to slow down as the bears start to hibernate. However, we've seen bears stay active almost consistently through the mild winters that we've had. So be aware where you put your trash and what do you have outside. These bears obviously have found home right in the midst of everything. So just keep, be bear-aware is what they say, so. And then that is what I have for District Two. I do have one other thing that is of massive importance that I wanted to bring up. As I noted last, at the last meeting, Senator Kiekeffer resigned from his Senate District 16, and it is a responsibility of filling that seat that falls to the counties. The governor appoints commissioners, however, counties appoint legislators to represent those seats that were and for which that seat resides in. In this case, Senate District 16 represents both parts of Washoe and all of Carson City. And the statute states that the county with the largest populations of those represented in that creates the process for the appointment. And in that case, that resides, 62% of that of Senator Kiekeffer's seat in Senate District 16 resides within Washoe County. I have met with staff and the mayor of Carson City, and we have agreed to the following process. And so I will outline that today, as we've done this a multitude of times before, this is how that process will go over the course of the next couple of weeks. Applications will be, all applications will be provided and accepted by Washoe County on behalf of both Carson City and Washoe County, and eligibility confirmed by our registrar voters for Washoe County residents and the Carson City clerk for Carson City residents. The application will be available for people to see on the Washoe County website starting on Wednesday, the 19th, to the 8/20th. The application, window for applications to be submitted will open on October 22nd at 9:00 AM, and those, and then close on Thursday, October 28th at noon, 12:00 PM. Applications received outside of that window will not be accepted. The applications can be submitted in person at the Washoe County Manager's Office or via email at the following email address, sd16applications@washoecounty.gov. Once again, that's sd16applications@washoecounty.gov. Only completed applications will be considered. The applications consist of an application form, a declaration of eligibility, and an optional cover letter or resume. Letters of recommendations that are submitted with the application will not be considered. Those should be submitted as public comment to each board meeting during each individual interview process, and the interviewees shall, will interview in front of both boards. The Carson Board, City Board of Supervisors will conduct their interviews to determine a nomination on November 4th, 2021. The Washoe County Board of County Commissioners will conduct our interviews to determine our nomination on November 9th, 2021. The two boards will have a joint meeting to appoint an individual to the seat on November 10th, 2021 via Zoom, I believe. But we'll have open locations for public comment during, at Carson City and in Washoe County for that October 10th meeting. Wednesday, October 20th, the morning of, the application's available to be viewed on Washoe County website or the county manager's office. And I think I've gone through most of that, so.
Did you move this on October 21st?
So October 21st is, the applications will be available for anybody to download them off of the county website. The 22nd at 9:00 AM is when the application period opens. 28th is when it will close at noon on the 28th, because Friday is a holiday. Thursday, November 4th, the Carson City interviews and nomination will occur. Thursday, November 9th, Washoe County interviews and nomination will occur, and then Wednesday, November 10th, will be a joint meeting to determine the appointment as per NRS.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What would be the best way for citizens to determine if they live in District 16?
There, the very, the easiest way to do that is to go to either Carson City's website or Washoe County's website and enter your address into the, into the search bar, and it will tell you your legislator, or you can go to NV SOS, Nevada Secretary of State, also enter your address, and it will give you who your legislator is. You can also go to Nevada State Legislature, that's ledge.nvjamie.us. It's NV.ledge.state.us, and that, you can also find who your legislator is based upon your address. All three websites will be able to affirm your address and tell you who your legislator is.
Perhaps, perhaps it would be wise for us on the page where they can download their application or input the information to their application, if they can do it straight online, to have a link so that they can determine if they are eligible.
I can't.
And I don't, I don't want to.
We can't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to do, so we can talk about it offline. So this is, because this isn't really.
This is Commissioner's comments. I get it. No, no, I understand. It's just.
So that's been the process that's been outlined and accepted by both boards, so I just wanted to notify the community, the board of that. All right. Seeing nothing further.
Quick question.
Yes.
Quick question for my, something I may have missed. Did you, can I repeat this and tell me if this is correct? On October 21st, what, at 8:00 AM is when the application will be available online?
October 20th is when the application will be available online.
At 10:00, 8:00 AM?
Yes. The morning, I believe that morning at the, I believe 8:00 AM, I don't have an actual time, but I believe on the 20th. So tomorrow morning, that application will be available online through the county website.
Thank you.
All right. That is, concludes all my comments. I see nothing further from any of the other commissioners. We'll close, county managers, we are on to item eight, Mr. Manager.
Item eight is an appearance by Dwayne Smith, Professional Engineer, Engineering and Capital Projects Division Director, Washoe County Community Services Department, with updates and recommended strategies for reclaimed water in the South Truckee Meadows with direction to staff. Mr. Smith is with us this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Smith. How are you?
Good, sir. Thank you very much. Good morning to everyone. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. Look forward to a brief presentation and then any discussion that you might have regarding this topic today. So I wanted to just jump in as quickly as possible, give just a second.
I see, I see almost there. There we go.
Beautiful picture of the Truckee River there. So today, just wanted to kind of reaffirm. So these are our discussion, discussion topics. Wanted to give you a quick reclaim water update in the South Truckee Meadows, talk a little bit about our facility planning, and let you know how that led to a 2021 rate study for the utility. And out of these efforts, I have some recommendations for you today, and I am seeking some input from you at the end of the presentation. Just to quickly reaffirm, these are the regional sewer sheds in our area, so you can see the, by far the largest is the sewer shed for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. That's the facility that's owned and managed by the city of Reno and city of Sparks. I'm going to focus in on one of our three areas, which is the South Truckee Meadows, and that's the area in the green below. This is our reclaimed water service territory in the South Truckee Meadows, so you can see some of the key elements, including Arrow Creek to the west or to the left of the display. And the majority of our reclaim efforts are focused in the South Truckee Meadows, areas of Damani Ranch, Double Diamond, Thomas Creek, and those areas. We have three different storage tanks, including Huffacre Reservoir, a 4,000-foot acre foot, 4,000-acre foot reservoir that we utilize. We have over 34 miles of piping. We have the associated water infrastructure that allows us to successfully deliver reclaimed water during the irrigation seasons and also for construction water during all times of the year. Effluent management in the South Truckee Meadows, you know, we've been successful in treating and managing effluent in South Truckee Meadows for over 30 years. We do have some constraints. First of all, there is no discharge of our reclaimed water to any surface water that enters the Truckee River. We're very sensitive to that. That's part of our permit, and we're very respectful of that process. We produce Class A treated effluent from our stemware facility. This is a high-quality tertiary-treated water that's filtered and disinfected. It is a full-contact water. It is not available for drinking. We have over 337 services where we provide water in the South Truckee Meadows, and on any given year, we are delivering somewhere between 2,400 and then last year, for instance, it was over 2,800 acre feet of high-quality reclaimed water. During the non-irrigation seasons, even though construction does continue to use our water year-round, we store our water in Huffacre Reservoir. Water quality is a, has always been and something that we've had to manage. Our water quality, I will tell you, is a, is a very important focus of what we do with the reclaimed water system in the South Truckee Meadows. We are very responsive to the customer issues. Over the years, we've had some challenges with things like particulates or nutrients in that effluent, and we have done a very good job of bringing down those issues, most specifically and recently boron and arsenic. Proud to say that we've sealed up the collection system to a great degree in the South Truckee Meadows, and we've reduced arsenic concentrations in our reclaimed water from, at a time, it was over 300 parts per billion, down now to between 30 and 40 parts per billion. The facility planning and analysis, this is a big part of what any utility does, and this is certainly part of our guidance as we go through and manage the utility on a daily basis. We've been very proactive. We've implemented management strategies and capital projects that have allowed us to stay on top of the utility and make sure that we are able to continue to write will serves for sewer treatment in the South Truckee Meadows. We work very hard at this, and I want to make sure that you know that we never want to be in front of you telling you that we weren't out in front of the curve and planning for new development and planning for those increased flows and increased deliveries of reclaimed water. That's an important part of our process. So reclaimed water, just again, as a reminder, there's a lot of different approved uses for Class A under NAC and NRS, 445A. We focus on golf courses, schools and athletic fields, the parks. We put a lot of water on our roadways, medians, those areas, and of course, construction and dust control. Right now, we're also focused on some of the other items that you see listed here. Reclaimed water is very valuable. There are quite a few users. I just want to list off a couple of the top 10, Bishop McNoeg, Whiff Run, a golf course, South Valley's Parks. You probably see the purple signs down at the park and know that our reclaimed water from South Truckee Meadows is used to irrigate that, all that development. DePauli Middle School, Damani High, Arrow Creek Golf Course, and the list goes on. Interesting fact, the top 34 of those 330-plus customers, the top 34 users, use 90% of our reclaimed water. So in line with Washoe County's mission and the state, mission statement, the direction that you've continued to give and be very clear on, we are focused on providing and sustaining a safe and healthy and secure community, and we are doing this in the utility through the effective wastewater treatment and reclaimed water management in the South Truckee Meadows. We meet our customers' needs and expectations. We're providing the highest levels of service at the lowest cost possible. This is a founding principle. We also, through our application of our approaches and our management strategies, we're meeting our regulatory requirements and being respectful of our environment, the water cycle, the water sources, and of course, how we're managing the end product, which is reclaimed water. We apply best practices, and we also are focused on fit-for-purpose solutions. I'm going to talk a little bit more about these as we move more through the presentation. But of course, with any utility, and certainly with ours, we have challenges. I mentioned that at the beginning, that all of our reclaimed water must go out for either irrigation or construction purposes currently or those other uses listed. It cannot enter the Truckee River environment. Right now, our daily, average daily inflows are about 3.45 million gallons per day. I think the last time I was in, in front of you talking about this, we were down at about the 2.8, 2.9, so you can see over just the last couple of years, our flows have come up. There's a lot of growth that's still going on down in the South Truckee Meadows. Our average daily outflow and our losses in our system are about 2.8 million gallons per day. So you can see right off the bat that there's a delta here. We're actually bringing in more wastewater and successfully treating that than we have places to put it. I'm going to come back, that's a very key and critical point that I want to make. Just a couple of other, other things, just quickly. Our irrigation season is our primary disposal time, so we store our water in Huffacre Reservoir. We just completed this last year, the final phase of lining that reservoir so that we can protect this valuable reclaimed water resource. So we've invested quite a bit of money into our Huffacre Reservoir and are successful in protecting that, that resource. But we're still subject to wet and dry seasons. So when it's, when it's a wet season, we get a lot more infill and infiltration that comes in, so that means more water comes into our facility. And during the dry times, you know, we have had to in the past augment our reclaimed water system with other resources. We do own quite a few White's Creek water and Thomas Creek water resources. Those are part of Washoe County's utility portfolio, and we do rely on those when, when times require that. So I've talked, if I can, so I've talked a little bit about what we do, how we do it, and our approaches, you know, so, but I also mentioned that we have more water coming in the front door of the treatment plant in the South Truckee Meadows than we do places for it to go out. So why aren't people using more reclaimed water? Well, I just listed a few of these points up at the top of why we should be using reclaimed water, and of course, first and foremost, it reduces our dependency on potable water. For every gallon of water that's put to beneficial use. For every gallon of water that's put to beneficial use on turf, on trees, on ballfields, on parks, on our golf courses, on our streets, on our streetscape, excuse me, it preserves that gallon of water in the Trekkie River or in Nevada's precious groundwater resources. It's sustainable. Anytime you have a reclaimed water system, you're going to have things like drought resistance. People are still going to continue to flush their toilets, take their showers, wash their clothes, et cetera. So this is, this is a resource that we have available to us even in those difficult times. And it does, of course, create resilient communities. It's cost-effective and I, I just would quickly mention the quality of life. In our area, uh, as many areas, we expect ballfields for our kids at schools. We expect to have green spaces, open spaces, our parks for people to go to and enjoy. It's a hallmark and a cornerstone of the quality of life in our area. But why isn't everybody using reclaimed water? Well, one of the things is availability. You know, we've only got, I, even though it's an impressive thirty-four miles of reclaimed water pipes in the South Trekkie Meadows, where reclaimed water lines don't go to every, every business, every school, every location. We had to have, we have in the past, as I mentioned before, had some water quality issues, but as we move forward, I think this is one of those, uh, kind of success stories. We're looking forward to opening up, uh, new discussions with places like Montreux Golf Course, new discussions with Ormat for the use of our treated effluent and their processes. We've been told that the, can we go back just a second? So the, the cost to convert from potable to reclaimed is also a barrier. So if you have an apartment complex or a, a school or a business that's utilizing potable water, the cost to convert over to that lower quality but highly valuable reclaimed water resource still comes with a price tag. It still requires infrastructure, planning, operational strategies, et cetera. So there's a cost that goes along with that conversion. And of course, uh, as I've been out talking to our customers, both our existing customers and looking for new customers, as well as the rest of us in the utility, we can't, we have frequently heard that the cost of reclaimed water is, is still a barrier. People will say, well, wait a second, we've already made the decision to use potable water. Why would we want to convert? The, the delta's not that significant. You know, when you take in the, and factor in these other costs, there's plenty of potable water out there. So these are some of the comments that we've heard. So moving forward, you know, I just wanted to, um, uh, continue to, um, reaffirm with you that as we see growth in the South Trekkie Meadows specifically, we have to be prepared to meet our customer needs. We have to be prepared to continue to write sewer, sewer will serves. So some of these management strategies that I've listed up here, these are really critical to continue to do those things. We have to develop new reclaimed water customers. We have to work with our development community to, to find those opportunities to expand and extend the Purple Pipe System. Just as important, we need to maintain our existing customers. This is a big deal. If we had a, one of our large users, one of those top thirty-four users, one of the, one of the schools or a golf course or a street, you know, that, or, uh, areas that use our, our water, go out of business or make a different business decision and part of that factoring was the cost or the availability of reclaimed water, that would be a problem for us. So we have to continue to work with our existing reclaimed customers and make sure that our water quality standards are, are up to par and that, that we're being respectful of the fact that they are critical for our, our next steps moving forward. So we also have to con- convert existing potable water customers and continue to expand that distribution system. You know, it's challenging though. You know, there's increasing capital costs and operating costs across the board. All the easy reclaimed water sites have, have kind of been identified, right? We've got the two big golf courses in the South Trekkie Meadows, you know, Wolf Run and Arrow Creek. We've, we've worked with the schools, with the school district. For instance, Marcy Hers, the new school, uh, on Arrow Creek, you know, that, they took advantage of having this reclaimed water resource there. But those are kind of the easy ones. You know, we're looking into the future, also to plan for wetter and drier times. Right now, we're in one of those dry times, you know? That, that can switch as we've seen it do in the past. So our reclaim system, let me just say simply, our utility has to be robust enough to handle those increases in flows coming in the front door and our management strategies have to, have to match that for what's going out the back door. And of course, we also have to be responsible to find the highest value and the lowest cost. I didn't say just the lowest cost, but the highest value and lowest cost for our customers. These, these are the management strategies that, that we have in place. So to help sta- help us stay on top of all these issues, you know, these challenges, you know, we, we, we started looking real hard at our facility plans and updating those. That's led us to the place at which we made the right decisions about things like expanding the South Trekkie Meadows plant. But the, the, and we had done, um, of course, rate studies in the past, but we quickly realized, um, that we needed to update our current rate study. Any of these management strategies moving forward involve capital and involve operating and, and, and maintenance expenses. So we need to get our hands around this. So we implemented, or we initiated and you approved our, our rate study that we completed this year, earlier this year. And, um, I just want to make, uh, bring on a couple of points. First of all, it was a five-year forecast through fiscal year twenty-six. Our commitment is to update, uh, the rate studies on a five-year basis or as, as needed. It was, uh, very clear that we needed to separate out, even though, um, we are a utility, we needed to separate out and understand the revenues and expenses, uh, from user rates and connection fees and between the reclaim and the sewer utility. And, and of course, any of this work has to meet Washoe County financial and fiscal policies. You know, so these are things like deck coverage ratio, making sure that the operating fund has the required reserves, rabel- uh, rate stabilization, you know, reserves are in place. So I want to assure you that our rate study did and accounted for and met these requirements. So our goal again is to manage and operate Washoe County's utility as effectively as possible and minimize future rate increases. We looked at three scenarios, uh, to, 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 uh, follow that guidance that you've given us. The first was a sep- maintaining separate sewer and reclaim, uh, utilities. The second scenario was to combine the two business areas, the util- the reclaim utility and the sewer utility. And the third was to look at a realigned customer base. I'll just quickly say that we're very committed to working regionally with our partners and part of that re- that third bullet there, that realign customer base looks, uh, looked at how would our costs change or increase or decrease if we really focused on modifying our sewer sheds and making sure our sewer sheds were equivalent and equal to our customer base. This is what we've done up in Cold Springs. So you know, even though we've, we've had the, the annexation of two, uh, of, of actually multiple areas, but two large residential projects that are planned under first an MOU and then an agreement that you signed, that we will be the sewer purveyor from beginning, uh, from the beginning within the Cold Springs area. This is realigning our sewer sheds with our customer bases. We looked closely at the South Trekkie Meadows because of course, Washoe County treats City of Reno customers and there are areas, smaller pockets where City of Reno treats Washoe County customers. So we included that analysis. So the rate study findings. Uh, business area twelve, our sewer, is sufficient. It has sufficient financial stability to meet our county policies. Business area eleven, our reclaim utility, does not. The biggest reason is that the future infrastructure costs that we programmed into the rate study to manage the increasing reclaimed, uh, water that we need to manage and dispose of requires significant capital investment. If we keep separate utilities, if we keep separate business areas, we're going to have to raise our reclaim rates and connection fees to address the increased flows that we need to manage. This is just a quick slide, just to give you a, a little bit of, uh, financial background. So just again, showing our sewer system at the top and a reclaim system at the bottom. We do charge connection fees for both. Uh, currently, the sewer connection fee is five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per ERU. It does increase by ordinance fifty dollars per year. That's been in place, uh, long before I came to the county, over fifteen years, and we continue to rely upon that. You can see our user fees are also there. In the South Trekkie Meadows, our connection, uh, and resource fee for reclaimed water is six thousand dollars per acre foot of demand. And then you can see our rates that we charge, a dollar sixteen per thousand in a lower zone and a dollar seventy-four per thousand in our higher zone. Just wanted to quickly summarize our, our revenues, expense, expenses and our fund balances. And, and what this slide shows, just to be real clear, is our revenue and I, and you see how I put the word combined there. Uh, it's important, um, to, so this is in both the sewer and the reclaim combined. So our rate revenues, uh, for both of those pieces and, uh, along with our, uh, some of our other funding that comes in through service charges, interest, et cetera, is about nineteen million dollars, nineteen point eight million dollars. This is projected for fiscal year twenty-one, or fiscal year twenty-one, excuse me. And our expenses for the same time period for sewer reclaim and payments to others is about seventeen point eight. So you can see when we have the two utilities combined, that our revenues exceed our projected expenses. Remember I said a minute ago that we do, um, treat City of Reno customers and City of Reno does treat some of our customers as well? And that does occur also in Spanish Springs with the City of Sparks as well as Sun Valley General Improvement Industry. So that payments to others where it says Reno Sparks, that one point nine million, those are those payments that we pay to them to treat our customers. What I didn't break out there, um, and I'll just quickly say, is that our annual expense, our annual operating expense for the reclaim utility is about a million dollars per, e- excuse me, not our expense, our revenues are about a million dollars a year, one to one point two million dollars per year, uh, for our current structure for reclaim revenue. So how do we, um, you know, kind of recognizing these issues, recognizing that the sewer fund is pretty robust, recognizing that we have minimal revenue, uh, from the reclaim base? And also recognizing that, and certainly in our area, that successful and required wastewater service in the South Trekkie Meadows doesn't end with just treating of the wastewater, but it includes managing and putting to beneficial use that reclaimed water. And so I think that the, kind of the vision before or the, or the view before was that you had two different reclaim utilities and you drew a line and you said, we're going to treat water, we're going to convey water, wastewater into our plants, we're going to treat that water. And then there's a line some point, some arbitrary, uh, and a line that says from there on, then we're going to, we're going to, um, uh, meet our cost of service obligation for reclaim by, um, assigning that, that, you know, using that line and assigning those costs and then we're going to recover those rates. Well, because our utility doesn't have the ability to discharge reclaimed water into just anywhere, we can't put it in the river, we, we don't have those options to us, really when you think about it, the sewer customer really has that responsibility to pay for the conveyance, the treatment, then the management of that reclaimed water and how it's put to beneficial use. You can't util- you can't, um, discharge water from your house and only look at it from just that perspective of treatment. You've got to follow through with the effective management of that reclaimed water resource. So these recommendations recognize that this is unique. But I, I, I have to really immediately, um, go to that second bullet. Through this process, we're recommending combining the two business units. But in order to continue to be effective in our reclaimed, uh, water distribution, making sure that we're effectively managing that, we need to incentivize both our current and our future reclaimed water customers. And in talking with, uh, not just our existing customers, but through discussions that we've had, and then also looking at what's done in other areas like Carson City and even here locally with the City of Reno and UNR Farms and also with some of the, well, the agreement with the Tri-Center for this, um, for conveying, uh, reclaimed water to the, to the Tri-Center, uh, with no fees and, and charges. We're making the recommendation to remove the reclaim user rates and fees as part of this process. The third bullet, you're probably asking yourself, well, how can you do that without having some, some trickle effects? This rate study allowed us, again, the robustness of the sewer utility, the size of the sewer utility as compared to the reclaim utility, allows us to do this with no increase to sewer user rates. I think that's a, that's a hu- that's a very important point that I want to get across to you very clearly. If we take both the, the issues and the needs that we have for our utility, we recognize that the most effective way to continue to manage this forward is to merge those two utilities. We recognize that we have more and more reclaimed flows that have to be managed and disposed of, as well as wastewater treated. And we can do that by combining utilities and incentivizing our customers through a no rates and fees associated with reclaimed water. And we can do that without raising the rates for the customers. And I said, no increase to sewer user rates, but at this point, we're really talking about utility customers, right? We're just talking about no increase to the utility customers. We do have, uh, CPI, uh, increases every year. That's very, very, very typical. So part of our, our recommendations also recognize that we need to increase those deliveries, that infrastructure, those customers paced with growth in the South Trekkie Meadows. We need to continue to implement those water quality improvements, which we are. We need to continue to educate and convert existing potable water customers over to reclaimed water customers.
Mr. Smith, I'm going to pause you just for a second because we can, I need to, uh, Commissioner Jung dropped off the line. I need to grab her and bring her back in. Commissioner, do we have?
Hi, this is Kenny. Hi.
Okay, great, thanks. So Mr. Smith, if you can wrap up.
Yes, sir. Um, let me jump, and of course, we continue to collaborate with our approaches with UNR Water Innovation Institute, uh, institute that we're part of and thank you Commissioner Hardtong for championing that and letting that get into place. And of course, we also work with our regional utility purveyors. The last bullet is really important for me, it's capital and cost avoidance. This, this approach, this, uh, recommendation that, that we're bringing before you today, um, on, on a first-touch basis, um, really recognizes that, um, being respectful and if we can jump to the next slide. Being respectful to our, our utility customers, you know, we really have to focus, continue to focus on our core values. And that's, we can avoid significant cost increases for alternatives if we, and I strongly believe this, if we implement these management strategies into our toolbox in the South Trekkie Meadows. This, this, uh, these core values, these beneficial uses of reclaimed water will reduce the amount of potable water, reduce the amount of Trekkie River water and reduce Nevada's, depend- our dependency on Nevada's precious groundwater resource. It's sustainable. We're keeping our customers in place. This is part of our resiliency approach for making sure that we're utilizing drought-resistant resources to do these things. I can't speak enough, as, as you all know, about the quality of life and what our expectations are and that great quality of life that we bring to our residents, uh, throughout all areas. And of course, I, I'm very passionate about the last one, that's the fit-for-purpose. It's matching the water quality to the need and that's really what we're, what we're doing. Washoe County made the decision over thirty years ago, when the South Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility was built, and that decision was to manage reclaimed water through this process of delivering it to our customers and putting that to beneficial use. That water is only treated to Class A standard because it only needs to be treated to Class A standard for irrigation, for those construction water purposes, et cetera. And so we're able to do that at a low cost and a very high value. If we jump to the next one, I'd just quickly say that I want to reaffirm our commitments. Part of our regional activities as well as, as in-house, we're working with the regional, Hidden Valley Park to, um, bring reclaimed water to that park, uh, also to build a, a tank there that's going to allow us to successfully do other reclaim projects in the area. This will open up the door also to the, uh, golf course there in Hidden Valley. Uh, we're working very closely with the developers of the Bella Vista or Talis Valley, uh, regional, uh, residential development. development that's relatively close to our facility. Our westward expansion, you can kind of see that orange line that goes off to the west as far as Washoe Golf Course. We believe very much that through investment in extended infrastructure, we're going to be able to significantly reduce the use of Trekey River water at these, at the Washoe Golf Course, Lakeside, Lake Ridge, excuse me, also Anderson Park, et cetera. There's a lot of great facilities along the way that can take advantage of and utilize this reclaimed water. And again, it's a cost avoidance strategy for us. So I just jumped to the last slide, which is, again, we're seeking direction to merge business areas eleven and twelve, reclaim and sewer, and to incentivize reclaim both new and existing customers by removing user fees and charges. Our commitment is to continue to produce the high-quality reclaimed water and to work with and educate our partners that utilize this water, continue to work with the Innovation Institute, and of course, work with the State of Nevada and our Health Department to really work through some of those regulation updates that are necessary as well. So I hope I have given you an idea and been clear with what the discussion was today with you. I'm available for questions, and I would just follow up by saying that if you do give direction, the direction that I'm seeking really means this, that I would come back to you with a resolution that would outline the specifics and the details of merging the two business areas and removing the user rates and fees. So that would be the next step, and the next step after that would be ordinance changes, so there would be first readings, second readings, et cetera. So this is a multi-step process. I'm going to be before you multiple times to go through this process with you and seek your input and your guidance as we move forward. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you might imagine, I've had lots of conversations over the last, I don't know, nine-ish years, nearly nine years with staff on this. I've been very involved, obviously, with Tom Wharf and Western Regional Water, but I do want to put a couple of things on the record because I think it's important, and I think we're going the right direction. And what people need to understand is that these golf courses, these, these other facilities have water rights, they own water rights, and they can use those water rights. As an example, we talked about Washoe. Washoe Golf Course has how many acre feet of water rights right now? And, and those all come from Steamboat, if memory serves me correctly.
Yeah, I don't have the exact number.
Approximately.
But it's approximately four hundred acre feet.
Four hundred acre feet.
And that's Trekey River water.
And those are, and that's Trekey River water rights. So if we can get them moved to reclaimed water, those water rights can be used elsewhere. Or sustain, not development, but users, which is, which is extremely important. That's the, that's the important part of this. Talk to us a little bit about, I mean, I, we have, we have had this discussion, Mr. Smith, about the no-rate schedule. Who puts in the infrastructure? If, if a golf course wants to use, a privately held golf course wants to use this water, who buys the infrastructure? Is Washoe County taxpayer or, or utility ratepayers, I should say? Are they on the hook for that infrastructure or would the golf course have to put it in? How would it work?
A golf course or any other user as they're going through a development process, they would be required to construct that infrastructure. It'd be no different than what is in place today.
Okay.
This, this doesn't change, this recommendation doesn't change that part of the process.
No different then, and by the way, this was not part of Washoe County, the four thousand acre feet that go to the Tri Center, the Tri Center was, they were, they were, I'm just going to say liable to put in that infrastructure. And what most people don't understand is that they left a great deal of water in the river to get those, that four thousand acre feet, and then there was a return flow management agreement that was written. I mean, it was a, everybody looked at it as a giveaway, and the reality was is that they left a great deal of water in the river, that, of water rights that they already owned.
That's right.
So that was a, it was really, truly actually a win because Tom Wharf was, was putting that water into the river and it was not highly treated. And so, so here's the, here's where the, sort of the rubber meets the road. What happens in the future if we need that water, not for golf courses? Because, because look, at the end of the day, if, if we run into a scenario, because nobody can tell us what's going to happen, if we run into a scenario somewhat similar to what's happened in Central Valley in, in California, where it's not just water for irrigation of crops, it's, it's actually water coming out of people's taps. It's just, it's been turned off, there is just no water. Will we be able to switch our, because what you're talking about is 2.8 million gallons a day, which is eight point six acre feet approximately of, of water coming out of that Using a fifteen thousand gallon a month per household, and I actually use less than that in the, in the wintertime, my, my household, and it's only my wife and I, of course, but we use about, I don't know, between nine and eleven thousand gallons a month on a, in a non-irrigation season. But using fifteen thousand gallons a month, that's a hundred and eighty-six houses of water for one month. So here's my point with this. While I recognize Class A plus is not potable, at some point, you know, the Water Innovation Institute is working on this, we're working on a, a, an indirect potable reuse program up in, in American Flat. What happens when the cost, because it will, it's only a matter of time, and they've done, they've had great strides at the Water Innovation Institute, as you well know, with BAC, with bioactivated carbon treatments, and it's, and it's been highly effective, as opposed to what's happening in California near the coast, which is, you know, osmosis or...
Reverse osmosis.
Reverse osmosis, thank you. It escaped me. But what happens when a quaternary or a quinary treatment comes in? How will we deal with that? What do we tell those customers, the golf courses and the green belts, that, hey, look, we can't give you this water any longer because it has to be used for a higher, more important purpose?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that question, and I think that's something as water managers we all are thinking about, talking about, and working toward, and I want to give you a couple of points. First of all, while we do not have Class A plus facilities at the STEM Wharf, during this expansion phase of the STEM Wharf, we did convert our biological processes over to what's referred to as Barden Pho. Barden Pho is an accepted treatment process that would not stymie us from moving to a Class A plus if we ever needed to do that in the South Trekey Meadows. So I wanted to, first of all, reassure you that we're on top of this, that we're thinking about these things. We also recognize a significant cost, both capital and operational and maintenance associated with Class A plus, and those were decisions, why we didn't move toward Class A plus along with other things as part of this expansion phase. But ultimately, the water that goes into the front door is treated and is discharged by Washoe County is Washoe County's water. So I would think that if the, if the set of circumstances reached a point in the future where there were no other options and that decisions were made to start to not irrigate ball fields and parks and, and schools and those types of things, and that water needed to be utilized for drinking water purposes, that we would have the ability to make those choices and change what we're doing with that water.
So when you, so, so the point, the point here is, when you bring back a resolution to this board, I will not agree to it unless there's an off-ramp. That's just me. Maybe the other commissioners will, that's, that, their vote is their vote. For me personally, unless you've got an off-ramp, for, for whatever reason, your fault, my fault, anybody's fault, if there's not an off-ramp, I will not agree to it. Just, you gotta give me, you gotta give, and it's, and by the way, it's not going to be me that makes that decision ultimately in the future. I won't be here. This is, this is for future generations. I do not want to bind future boards to agreements for use of this water, because as you know, Mr. Smith, what we've talked about, and I have, and I have, I have said this time and time again, how do we move reclaimed water from the liability side of our, our balance sheet to the asset side? So those, those are, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Duane, this is very informative. I am not prepared to give direction today. I, I need this in a staff report so I have more time to digest the budget numbers, and I know my, the Vice Chairman has been doing this for a long time, but I'm just now learning about what the best options would be. So I just want to make sure I make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, can I just interrupt you for just a second?
Sure.
Just thinking about what the commissioner's comments were. We're very prepared to have our consultant who performed the rate study come in and actually give that presentation if that would be helpful as part of this process.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold, hold on. All right. I think we've had a lot of comment about this today, and it's, we've been here quite a while, and we've got a lot of work still, we've got people waiting patiently. So I want to be respectful of time. As Mr. Smith has outlined, that there are, this is the initial step, this is not the finality of this step, and that a resolution would come back prior to any ordinance change. And so we've got lots to do, so we'll have plenty of time for input and plenty of time for further presentations on a regular business meeting and, and get to, because we've got a lot to get done today. And at this point, I would look to the board with, I believe, with possible direction as the Vice Chairman has outlined, that you go forward with a resolution and bring forward some more of a staff report that outlines all of the details for staff, for the, for the commission and for the public on a potential of merging the area business eleven and twelve and incentivizing existing and new reclaimed water users. And that, so then we can, we can chew that up at a later time in date. I think that's the direction that we have today.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion in my, my opinion, I will, that's a motion from, for, with that direction. There's a second on the floor from Vice Chair. I believe the record know that Commissioner Herman has left the, has left for the day. I will, do we have any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have, nobody signed in.
All right, seeing no further public comment, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting.
No.
Okay.
There was a no.
No, you don't. We have, I have to, okay, keep going, you keep going, all right, keep going. All right, all right, all right, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That was not unanimous. There was a, a nay from Hill.
Okay, I'm sorry. Please, please correct, but the record showed that Commissioner Hill was a nay, Commissioner Jung, Vice Chairman Hartung, and myself were in, with support, and Commissioner Herman did not vote. All right, we are on to item eight, I mean, item nine. This is our proclamations. So with that, will you, Mr. Manager?
Item nine, A1 is a proclamation to proclaim October 2021 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month. And with us today, we have Ryan Gustafson from the Human Services Agency.
Mr. Gustafson, come on down, he's been sitting over there quietly, patiently in the corner. Mr. Gustafson is a longstanding, long-serving member of a Human Services Agency, and it's always nice to see you when you come in, please, pleasure us with your presence, so.
Yeah, and this is a very important topic. Washoe County, Nevada proclamation, whereas unsafe sleep practices are one of the leading causes of death among otherwise healthy infants under the age of one in Washoe County, and whereas there have been twenty infant deaths in Washoe County from fiscal years 2017 to 2021, too many, due to unsafe sleep situations, and whereas babies can suffocate as a result of sleeping in an adult bed or on other dangerous sleep surfaces such as couches, arm, chairs, or pillows, and whereas babies sleep safest when sleeping alone, on their back, in a crib or bassinet with a firm mattress and tightly fitted sheets with no other items such as pillows, toys, blankets, in a sleep area where they're dressed appropriately so they don't overheat, and whereas the Washoe County Human Services Agency Children's Services Division declares the month of October Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month in an effort to prevent sudden infant deaths and promote safe sleep practices. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month and encourages all Washoe County caregivers, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, babysitters, childcare providers, healthcare providers, and all others to practice safe sleep habits and reduce the risk of accidental infant deaths dated the nineteenth of October 21, 2021, and signed by our Chairman, Mr. Bob Lucy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, Chair Lucy, and the Commission. I'll, I'll keep this brief. We've had nearly twenty-five unsafe sleep and co-sleeping fatalities in the last five years here in Washoe County. Obviously, our goal is to get that number to zero, and so we appreciate this proclamation, and we are, the Human Services Agency is strategically partnering with some agencies in town to really raise public awareness through bus wraps, billboards, PSAs, and again, events like this today. Would love to get that number to zero just by using some basic safe sleep techniques. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Manager.
On to nine, A2, which is a proclamation, a proclamation to proclaim the week of October seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2021, as National Friends of Libraries Week. And with us today, we have Dan Irwin, who is the President of the Friends of the Library.
Well, I think Mr. Irwin had to, he had to leave.
Oh, he's not here.
Come on in.
Okay.
It's nice to see you again. How are you?
Fine.
Good, good, good. Well, this is a proclamation for the Friends of Libraries Week. It's my honor to present this proclamation on behalf of Washoe County today. So whereas the Friends of Washoe County Library contributes much-needed support to Wash County library system through dedicated fundraising, providing resources that support programming, vital equipment, support for children's readings programs, and year-round special events. And whereas Friends of Washoe County Library promotes the collection of library, of the library and strives to provide children with an educational head start, encourage literacy and lifelong learning. And whereas the work of the Friends of Washoe County Library ensures that the library system continues to be a central and welcoming community hub for everyone. And whereas now, more than ever during this, during the COVID crisis, the Friends of Washoe County Library understands the critical importance of a well-funded library and advocates to ensure that its library system gets the resources needed to provide critical services to all ages. And whereas the Friends' commitment to the library continues to set an example for all and how volunteerism leads in positive civic engagement and betterment for our community. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2021, as National Friends of Libraries Week, signed by myself, Chair of Washoe County Commission. And I have to say, the Friends of Washoe, the Friends of Washoe County Library, they have been tremendously successful in their book sales, a number of their fundraising, I mean, without their continued support of our library system, we would suffer tremendously through our community, and their, and their act, providing the access that they do to all of the community members is tremendous, and all volunteer, and, I mean, it's such a pleasure to read this every year to you because you do so much work, and just, just to do the simple proclamation is not nearly enough. Thanks for all the work through your organization.
It's our pleasure.
So, with that, please.
Oh, please, I, I, let me extend our thanks to you to make it available that we can have a book sale site, because otherwise we couldn't afford to do what we do for the library. So again, thank you very, very much for all your support.
My pleasure, all right.
Oh, and one last thing, our next book sale is November thirteenth.
November thirteenth for the book sale. All right.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, is that you, Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
That's Marcy Cooper Smith's sister who drove her to Vegas and attended the gala with her, so see how the family all behaves, they're wonderful. Thank you, Kyle.
And thank you very much.
We're on to number, item ten, donations.
Yes, so I'm in a form of a motion, do I have a motion to accept both proclamations?
So moved.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed.
Aye.
There was no, was there any public comment on that item, Madam Clerk? I don't see any on my speaker.
There's no public comment. Who was the second?
There was no public comment. Who was the seconder?
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you.
And it was voted unanimously by all commissioners. All right, item 10. These are our donations. So, Mr. Vice Chairman?
So, please note that 11C1 has been removed. We already took a vote on that.
10 donations.
Oh, 10. Oh, my bad. My bad. My bad. Forgive me. I'm off by one. We have a recommendation to retroactively approve and acceptance of a K-9 dog, K-9 dog equipment handler training and travel costs of $16,317.00 and zero cents from Washoe County K-9 Partners to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office K-9 Unit. You know, Mr. Chair, we could not have a successful K-9 program without that, our partnership with the Washoe County K-9 Partners. So I just, my debt of gratitude goes out to them. They have all manner of fundraisers throughout the year, you know, to raise. These dogs are very expensive. The training is very expensive. And so I just want to send out a deep debt of gratitude.
We do thank you for those donations. Is that in the form of a motion, sir?
It is, Mr. Chair.
All right. I will second that motion. I have a motion and a second to accept the donations for 10A1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
My screen is locked up.
I think we're all locked up.
Yeah, we're locked up.
Commissioner Herman, screen locked. All right. So, Madam Clerk, can we just continue to move?
We can.
Until you resolve that?
I've got it recorded.
You have recorded the vote?
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Manager, we're on to item 11. This is our consent agenda. There are two consent items remaining, which would be 11A1 and 11B1. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda or discussed at further length? Seeing none, looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda as posted?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hill, motion from Vice Chair Hartung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Manager, we're on to item 12.
Item 12 is a recommendation to appoint either Cheryl Bennett, John Clacking, or Thomas Young as the Washoe County Commission's non-elected member to the District Board of Health for a term from October 20th, 2021 to September 30th, 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. This is an appointment process for the District Board of Health, for the appointment seat from our county commission. Mr. Young has served as a member for us. He was appointed in 2017 to serve until December 31st of 2022 to complete the term of David Silverman. And we are now getting to that reappointment and confirming that seat. We have three applicants, Cheryl Bennett, John Clacking, and Thomas Young that have applied. Their applications are in your packet at this time. I will open this up for discussion to any of the commissioners for comments, and we will go from there. And then the way we will conduct this is a voting process where we will all submit a ballot to the clerk. The clerk, we will fill out and check the name of the appointment we would like to move forward. The clerk then will read the name of the commissioner and our suggested appointment for that commissioner, and then we will move for a motion after that. So with that, I will open up discussion. Vice Chair Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank all of the applicants. They're all highly qualified. And this is a difficult decision, because they're all very, very qualified for this position. So, thank you.
All right. And I also want to thank all of the applicants. And I also want to thank Mr. Young for his continued service to complete Mr. Silverman's tendency. He has definitely been a willing and very functional servant for the Board of County, Board of Health. But we are constantly looking to continue to evolve and continue to grow within our county. So we're looking forward to this, the seat for sure. And the Board of Health is a very important board. So we do want to thank Mr. Young for all of his service over the last few years. With that, and Commissioner Jung, if you will email the clerk your recommendation for...
I'm texting her, sir, from my cell phone to her county's cell phone.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. All right. And so, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
I have nobody signed in.
All right. All right. Do you have...
I have the ballots I will distribute, and they will be verified by the district attorney.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've verified the votes.
Thank you, Madam DA. Madam Clerk, will you please read the votes?
I will read the votes. Commissioner, Vice Chair Hartung voted for John Clacking. Commissioner Hill voted for John Clacking. Bob Lucy voted for John Clacking. Kitty Jung voted for Thomas Young. The vote is three for John Clacking, one for Young.
All right. And please let the record note show that Commissioner Herman was not here to submit a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to place Dr. John Clacking on the District Board of Health for the term of October 20th to September 30th, 2025.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion on the item. Commissioner Jung, do you have anything?
No, I'll vote with the majority of the board. That's the way democracy works. The majority rules. And Mr. Vice Chairman, with respect for the minority. Thank you.
Thank you.
He taught me that.
All right. I have a motion and a second, seeing nothing further. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right. Mr. Manager, that takes us to item 13.
Item 13 is a recommendation and possible action to approve a resolution to delegate decision-making authority regarding litigation to the chair of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners or the Washoe County manager pursuant to NRS 241.0357.
All right. Mr. Large, good morning. Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. This is a correction to last week's meeting. We did have an issue on this in regards to a suggestion made by myself to clarify, due to state law that was passed in previous legislative sessions in regards to open meeting law, there was a definition of a subcommittee of any governing board. And with the resolution, or the resolution that was identified last week during the meeting, with the addition of "and," the manager and myself, we created a subcommittee, a legal subcommittee that would be subject to open meeting law and be open to public viewing. And so to maintain the ability for us to create, to stay a legally viable county, and under the direction of our district attorney, and keep our legal proceedings confidential and private while in the midst of legal proceedings, we need to make this, we have to change and modify the resolution from last week and change the addition of "and" back to "or" as it was originally drafted in the resolution. Mr. Large is here to clarify any questions you may have on this issue specifically. He did present last week in regards to why the intent of this was, and I think actually did transpire last week that we needed to take an action with intervening in the Nevada Energy PUC decision. And so with those types of interventions, I think that was really the intent of Mr. Large's presentation from the district attorney's office. So with that, commissioners, do you have, does anybody have any questions in regards to this? Commissioner Jung, do you have any questions?
No. Great job. Thanks, staff.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hill?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make the motion on this, but I did want to thank staff for adding the part. And I just want to make it clear for the public that we've added to the resolution that any agreement reached or action taken under this resolution will be reported on via agenda item and presented to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners at the next available commission meeting after the action or agreement occurs, so we can ensure that the public can know about these litigation matters. And I really appreciate that change. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Janet Butcher.
All right.
Delegation so narrowly granted has indications and possibilities of bias. It defies common sense.
I have nobody else signed in.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Hill?
Yes, sir. That's my motion.
Motion to approve. I have a second. I will move, I move to second. I'll second the motion. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries with three commissioners voting and affirmative, and Vice Chair Hartung in the opposition. All right. That takes us to our final public comment. Mr. Manager?
Item 14 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please call public comment?
Janet Butcher?
I miss Paul Harvey and the rest of the story. The trucking issue with California LA ports, the port of Los Angeles, and the port of Long Beach is that all semi-tractors have to be current with the new California emission standards, the new Green Deal. As a consequence, that means trucks cannot be older than three years if they are to pick up or deliver containers at those ports. This issue wipes out approximately half of the fleet of trucks used to move containers in and out of port. Operating the port 24/7 will not cure this issue, because all it does is pile up more containers that sit idle as they await a limited number of trucks to pick them up. In effect, what this 2020 determination and settlement created was an inability of half the nation's truckers from picking up anything from the port of LA or port of Long Beach. Virtually all private owner-operator trucks and half of the fleet trucks that are used for moving containers across the nation were shut out. In an effort to offset the problem, transportation companies started using compliant trucks, low emission, to take the products to the California state line, where they could be transferred to non-compliant trucks who could not enter California. However, the scale of the problem creates an immediate bottleneck that builds over time. It doesn't matter if the ports start working 24/7. They are only going to end up with even more containers waiting on a limited amount of available trucks.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
I have nobody else signed in.
All right. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We are on to item 15. This is our final commissioners and county managers announcement. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, Commissioner Jung?
No, thank you. Great job today.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned.